All right, so good evening, everyone. I'm John Schneider, Chairman of the ZBA. And as you may have heard, we're being broadcast on the cable television and also Daphne is recording. So don't say anything you don't want out in the public. As I always say at the start of these meetings, to just deal with the technical problem of not having to advertise it for some reason. The Internet blows up on us. Everything has continued until the hearing next month, but we've managed for two years now to get through all these hearings without any major technical problems. So tonight, we have two substantive matters, Baker's Best and Roach Brothers. But we'll start with dealing with the minutes from the last meeting. Unless there's a proposed amendment, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second that. Aye.
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 All right. So the first matter is case number one is 150 Gould Street. Baker's Best Inc. applicant applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit amendment under sections 1.4.2, 3.2.1, 5.1.1, 5.1.2, 5.1.3, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to extend or renew the special permit dated September 17, 2020, issued to Baker's Best Inc. to authorize takeout food service for an additional period of not less than two years or such other time as the board may allow. Properties located at 150 Gould Street in the industrial one district. And on this, we have Mr. Jenta. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here this evening representing Baker's Best and with me on Zoom is Michael Baker and Robert Mueller of Baker's Best. So this is a relatively straightforward application, but I'm going to give it, just remind everybody and sort of refresh the recollection with respect to Baker's Best. So Baker's Best started an operation approximately 38 years ago. About 19 years ago, they opened a retail restaurant cafe in Newton Highlands. In 2006, they came before the board and received special permits and zoning relief to open a catering business at 150 Gould Street. They took approximately half of the building at that time. They opened up the business. Everything went well. In fact, the business went so well that in 2019, shortly before COVID, they came before the board to occupy the entire building as the tenant that had been on the other side had moved out, leaving it vacant, and they could use the space for employee break rooms and storage and whatnot. So the board granted that permit. Then unfortunately, COVID hit and their business took a severe hit. The number of employees dropped dramatically. Their overall business transactions dropped dramatically. So they sought a temporary permit from the selectmen to engage in takeout activities, which was granted. But that was, two years ago, that was coming up for expiration in October of 2020. So they came before this board for more permanent relief in the nature of additional zoning relief, a special permit or an amendment to their existing special permits to allow for takeout on a, sort of a more permanent basis. At that hearing, there were concerns about, well, what would happen if the business returned to the full scale that it previously was at? Michael Baker opined that it was unlikely to happen for quite some time, but the board had some concerns about that, so they granted the relief, but they limited it to a period of only two years. So here we are, two years later. There have been no issues with the takeout operation. I think you can see probably from the comments from the departments that they've not observed or been aware of any issues. Baker has, Baker's has not received any complaints from any of the neighbors. So there really hasn't been any impact from the takeout business. And unfortunately, while their business has improved, it's not anywhere near the pre-pandemic levels. They are still operating at substantially reduced capacity, and so they that they really need to keep the takeout in place for a longer period. So, you know, ideally, I would like to see them receive permission to continue the takeout indefinitely until they return to pre-COVID operations. But I expect the board will have concerns, so we've asked for not less than a two-year period consistent with what the original grant was. And so that's why we're here this evening, is basically just to extend the takeout so that they can continue on. Now, that's what we're here for, but in the backdrop of that, I will just mention that, you know, as the board's aware, there's a pending deal to transfer the Baker business as well as the property, and that still is moving forward in the background. But because the two-year period ends or will end before that's all finalized and consummated, in order to make sure that there's coverage and protection for the business, we have to get, we have to get an extension of the permit.
Can you describe the volume of the business? Its hours and where, where are people parking when they come to pick up?
Sure. So the, the takeout is, the takeout business is all in the front of the building, that, the parking area that's in the front. Basically, that, you know, there's an average of, of no more than maybe 10 pickups a day. You know, it will vary from day to day, but it is not a significant part of the business, but it does provide some additional cash flow that helps supplement the business. So it's not like there's a constant stream of people coming in and out. It's more like a, really an accessory or adjunct thing. Now, and one of the, one point to, one thing to note in that is when Baker's receives online or fax or phone orders, there is generally a delivery charge that's applied, or I'm sorry, not delivery charge, a minimum order amount that's applied. But for the takeout component, there is not a minimum. So, you know, some of the orders tend to be on the smaller side as opposed to the larger catering type orders.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll say in my view, I don't think we would ever approve a full retail operation at this location and that this relief was a recognition that Baker's Best has been a very good citizen and need them, and we want to help them out during difficult times. You know, if, if there's no one from the public objecting to this, I don't mind extending it for some limited further time, but, you know, this all needs to be reviewed in light of the proposal for Gordon Brothers to come on site. I mean, every, every time I drive by that location, it looks like a mess in front of the building, particularly when there's a delivery truck backed up the loading dock. But, you know, I'm personally okay with this, again, on a temporary basis, but you know, if this, if this turned into a massive amount of takeout equivalent to a retail, I just don't think it would be appropriate in this location.
Right. Right. And, and we're not looking for that sort of an activity. This is, this is an accessory adjunct really to the catering business. And we, I, I do expect we'll be back next month to review the Gordon's component. We were actually hoping to get on for this month, but due to some circumstances beyond our control, we had to kick that until next month. So obviously, this, everything will be reviewed as a part of that.
Yeah. And I think if we extend this, it ought to be with the understanding that it's all going to be reviewed as part of the Gordon Brothers proposal. Well, the, the police and the fire have no problems. The planning board had no comment. Daphne, is there anyone here from the public who wants to comment on this?
There are no hands raised on this issue at this moment.
Questions or comments from the other board members?
John, I agree with you that, that your historic perspective, how this was developed to sort of to provide relief. It is a congested location. My, I work at 160 Gould, which is the abutting neighbor. But they have done a nice job to, to keep it, you know, it appears to be, when I drive by several times a day, to be under control, but it is a very congested space in the front. And there's growing businesses all around. There's a pretty significant rehab of buildings right down the street that most likely will have more traffic over time, but I, I agree to provide temporary relief and then subject to review when the, the sale, Gordon's sale process goes forward.
On, I, on this one, I think it'd be appropriate to recuse myself on the application. Not that I have anything against the applicant. I was a customer for many years over in Newton Highlands. Just from some professional situations, I probably should let Nick vote on this.
That's fine. We have Mr. Levers here, and Nick, what's your view of this?
John, I agree with you. I think that granting indefinite relief isn't necessarily in the cards, especially with the new operator coming in. But continuing the temporary relief, I see no harm or foul.
And, and what's your view? I mean, I, I think we ought to agree for some defined period and with the understanding it'll all be reviewed when Gordon Brothers comes in. What, what's your view of an appropriate time?
I would hate to keep doing this, but if we're going to do it again with Gordon Brothers coming in, then I don't see why we do it for, you know, 12 months or something like 12 or 18 months at a maximum.
Mr. Goldman?
I, I agree it should be temporary. It's, it's apparently there's a very active sale. Mr. Good to mention they're applying soon, so probably in the order of a, of a year or so makes sense, but I'm flexible, 12 months, 18 months?
Okay. I mean, I, 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 it sounds like we have an agreement over 18 months. So someone want to make a motion?
Sure, sure. Move that the applicant's request for a special permit amendment under sections 142, 321, 5115, 512, and 513 to extend or renew the special permit that's in place and dated September 17, 2020, to authorize takeout food service for an additional period of 18 months, subject to a close review when the applicant is in the process of selling its business and the, the buyer will be in front of the board to see whether that proposed use is consistent with the ancillary takeout use now.
Second that.
I'll second my motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Guys, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
All right. So case number two is 377 Chestnut Street. Plan B Retail Design and Project Management LLC applicant applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections 1.4.6, 5.1.3 J and 5.1.3K and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow a change of the pre-existing non-conforming building and to waive the parking design requirements associated with the modification of the parking lot and the reduction of two curb cuts onto Chestnut Street. The relief sought as part of the renovations of the existing building at Roach Brothers Supermarket. The property is located at 377 Chestnut Street in the Chestnut Street Business District in the lower Chestnut Street Overlay District. On this, I guess, Mr. Bromley is, who's on this?
Yes. Daphne, I have lost my screen. I got the audio. I do not have the, the video.
So you want to go ahead and do the screen share? Go back to screen share.
I don't have that shown as an option right now.
If, if you move your, your pointer a little bit, the, the bottom of the screen?
And sometimes when you move it to the bottom of your screen, you'll see, you know, you'll see a, a banner and in it, it will have.
The screen share.
Yeah. So take your cursor, take your cursor to the bottom, you know, just move it up and down on the lower quadrant of your screen, and then a banner will show up that says, "Screen Share."
It's just not coming up. I've got a, I've got a screen with my menu on it with, with the package, but I'm not getting the screen share and I'm not getting the video.
Well, we all have the, we all have the plans and I, you know, we can look at the plans we have in our possession and if, if you know them, maybe you could just go forward and describe what's happening.
Yeah, I sure can. Do we want to start on the building itself? Do we want to start on the site?
Start with the building.
On the building. Okay, there is a rendering attached of the proposed facade, which we do have approval from the Design Review Board that has been approved, not for the signage, but for the facade itself. We are being suggested to go back for a special permit on the signage, which we will bow on, so we'll leave that out of the equation now. The building right now is going to be basically gutted except for the, the four outside walls and the roof structure. There will be a new facade going on, on the front face, and there will be a tower structure, including a mezzanine that's on the left side as shown in the rendering. The rent, the mezzanine space is not additional. It's actually replacing some very obsolete, almost illegal structure in the back of the building. So the square footage is actually a little bit less than what exists now on that side of it. The interior, the store will be closed. They'll do all full mechanical, electrical, being new as of the age of everything is very ancient. And we will be bringing it up to code as far as stretch energy, as far as all applicable codes essentially in place. There's a small addition. If people are familiar with the store, there's two diagonal corners cut off the vestibule. We're squaring those off to make the visual that we're looking to achieve. And in doing such, we're adding like 36 square feet of that footprint to the building just on those diagonal pieces on the front of the building.
Could you address the non-conformity and what it is?
The non-conformity is mainly on the site where in the rear left corner on the site plan, I've got a 20, I've got a 22 foot five dimension. We're required to have 25. That's an existing condition. We're not touching that corner of the building. We're naturally the property line. So that's an existing non-conforming that we are looking to keep in place.
So is that the only way that the building is non-conforming?
Um, yes, it is.
Anyone have any question before we move to the parking lot about the?
Well, yeah, actually, Charles, can you just tell us, show us where on the these plans that we all have copies or what page number might show us the, this non-conformity?
On the civil documents, it's C102.
MG. So G is the wrong plan?
No, C as in.
Yeah, okay.
Carver 102. That's the overall proposed site plan, and that shows the dimension at 22 foot five at the rear left corner of the building.
See, just give me a minute to catch that. C102, okay.
Charles, one question on the building. Is I look at the rendering, I'm presuming the front of the store now will be the front of the store rather than the side.
The entrance is relocating to the front face.
Under the Roach Brothers sign, Chestnut Street, did I can see that?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. And you're having a bottle redemption on the side, it looks like.
Correct. It's inter, right now, there are external machines on the far right corner.
Correct.
No weather protection. We're bringing that inside into the existing vestibule. And we are having a separate door coming in that side, allowing you in. Once you're in and you, and you have your redemption machines there, you make your deposits, you can enter the store, pick up your cart and go into the store from there. But the main entrance is funneled to the front of the store.
So, so looking at this plan, it looks like there's no side setback back to the north. Isn't that also another non-conformity?
To the north, you're saying? That's a two-foot setback, and we have a zero setback that we're allowed to have there.
You're allowed to have zero?
Zero, yes.
And any other questions about the building construction?
So question, there's a steel shed on the C102 on the upper right. I'm not sure what you used, it says, and it's, it's a structure. It's right on the property line? No setback requirement?
If you look at the existing site plan, there is a shed that when we did the initial survey is really currently off of the property. It splits the property line. That needs to be corrected. That needs to be removed, and we're doing this to replace it. That actually is a storage for the redemption bottles being returned.
So that shed is going to be removed?
The shed that currently is there, which is off, half on the property, half off, is being removed and replaced with this metal shed on the property line in the same area and for the same use.
I think what he's saying is if you go to V101, the first plan, you'll see a wood shed that crosses the line. Correct me if I'm wrong, Charles, but what you're saying is that wood shed is going to be replaced with a steel shed. It'll be touching the line, correct?
Correct.
So that's a substitution of a pre-existing non-conformity that gets you around the setback?
Yes. Well, the setback is zero at that property line.
Well, I'm not aware of that. For structure, I thought there was always a setback.
According to Alan Majors, I got my side setback at zero for that north side.
I think that's the existing conditions. I don't think that's permitted under the bylaw.
I'm reading as being required, allowed at zero. Unless Alan and Majors had made an error on that. That's what I had.
Who's Alan Majors?
They're the civil engineer.
The civil engineers that did the survey and the civil documents.
So if you, if you remove the encroaching shed and bring it to the property line, then you have a zero setback. But I'm not so sure that the bylaw in that zone permits a zero setback. I could be wrong, but I've never seen a zero setback.
Well, there, there are some districts where there is no setback requirement, but I'd be surprised if that's true in the Chestnut Street Business District.
I can certainly confer with Alan and Majors on that and, 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 you know, submit the documentation accordingly on that.
I, I, I think what we have is, my, my guess is you're reducing the encroachment and the non-conformity. And you're still non-conforming, but you're on the property line. Now, if there truly is a, no setback, then there's no non-conformity. Whatever it is, we need that for our opinion. And then the interesting thing is, is it really a non-conformity when it's, when it's encroaching on someone else's property?
I would think that would be the ultimate setback problem. You want it to be setback. I, I agree, John. It appears to be a replacement of a pre-existing non-conformity and making it less non-conforming, which would be positive. Okay, well, that's what it should be. Good.
The other thing on the site.
Which, which part is the overlay district and which part is the Chestnut Street Business District? Is that marked on the plan?
It's, it's all on the, oh, this site is all on the overlay, not the central business.
It, it looks to me like there's a, it's, 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 it's on page 88 of the zoning manual. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to read it. Yeah, it, it says for lots of budding residential district, there's a 50-foot setback, but for all other lots, there's no minimum yard setback.
In the lower Chestnut Street Overlay?
In the, in the Chestnut Street Overlay District.
Got it.
It's on page 88 of the zoning manual?
Yep.
Is it 3, 39.42? No, that's heights. So it's 39.41? Isn't it adjacent to a right away of the MBTA? Isn't there a train back there?
Yeah, but it's not, the side we're talking about is not adjacent to the right away. It's adjacent to another commercial property.
The curved property line in the back is a butter to the river.
Got it.
The side that we are talking about goes back into the oil company there, which courses a commercial property.
So, so, so it does look like zero is required. In any event, it strikes me that we're replacing a non-conformity with a less or equally non-conforming structure.
I agree with that. Yeah, surprisingly, no mill yard setback there. Yeah.
Are we okay to move on?
Okay, here.
Okay. So, so if there are no other questions about the building, let's move to the parking, which is, and as Mr. Bromley said, the Design Review Board is giving us a report and they say they're fine with the building changes.
Yes, they have approved the aesthetics of the facade upgrade and the building changes. Yes.
Okay. So let's, let's, let's move then to the parking lot restructuring.
On the, on the parking lot, and we did issue a letter from Stan Tech, which is a review of the overall traffic within the site as well as the Chestnut Street, reducing the curb cuts to one in and out at site and eliminating two of the existing on the front, which we feel, they feel is a tremendous hazard. And you're actually, the way it's set up now, you're actually pretty much coming back out on Chestnut Street to make your loop around the parking bays. If you're not finding one in the first bay, you go into the second, actually by looping through Chestnut Street. So what we've said is that by reducing it to one, all traffic coming and going that direction, providing a little bit more queuing area for that traffic and redoing the parking so there's a systematic way of flowing through the parking lot. And that's what we tried to define. I think it's also important to point out that it, we all know it's a very, very tight site, no matter what. And it's a very active store to be within that site.
How long will the, how long will the construction take? A year?
No, we're actually planning on closing the store for a four-month period, working double shifts, selecting the right contractor to do the project and given the store a few weeks after that, but maximum probably would be in the five-month range.
So does, does, does this allow you to add parking places or?
No, it's actually, the way it is right now shown, it's an equal car for car. Looking at what was brought through by the Design Review Board, they had a couple of questions and a couple of the spots. And in conferring with Roach Brothers, the two spots that were in question was the one on the extreme property line up at where we've got future parcel pickups. And that was removed as a parking space and replaced with a cart corral. And the same way with the one over on the side parking area where it actually comes to a point right behind the other tenant building. There's a tight spot that would be a little bit difficult in their view to maneuver. So we had also replaced a cart corral into that area. The third one that was put in as a question was the one right to the, to the right side of the curb cut. Whereas you're actually pulling in with a, with a pretty sharp turn coming in. You would back out actually across the pedestrian walk and then pull out and around. And they were concerned with that from a safety standpoint. Roach Brothers has conceded that we would expand the pervious area and the landscaping into that bay. So we would have an increased island and we remove that, that, that condition. That gives us three cars reduced in the overall parking, bringing us down to 81 cars versus the 84. That, that will be three cars less than what exists there now.
And, and have, have you filed a new plan that shows the revision?
No, I have not. This just came up at the design review board on, on Monday night.
Okay, so where are you adding landscaping? I mean, I would, I would, if we, if we can, I would like to see some landscaping.
All of the islands are landscaped. Where there are not light poles, there's a little bit higher vegetation where the light poles, we kept it at a low growth. Shrubbery, decorative grasses, that sort of thing. Landscape has been submitted for this. All of the.
Along Chestnut Street, is that what you're talking about?
There's a little bit along Chestnut Street, but primarily it's in the islands at the end of the parking bays. At the front of the store, you have actually two islands. You have the one we just talked about at the, right at the curb cut. And you also have one that's on the corner of the lot. That's all fully landscaped, as well as that larger area where the queuing takes place up against the side of butter. And the island behind that and then the corner.
Sir, it would be helpful if we're, we're looking at the same plan as a V 101. It looks like there are parking space numbers. Maybe you can just help us follow along with you. I'm having a difficult time otherwise.
Howard, I think you'll have an easier time looking at C 102.
Yeah.
What I've been looking at.
The V 101 is the existing plan.
Okay. What's the number, C 101?
C 102.
Charlie 102.
Proposed plan.
And Howard, what are you saying when you're there? I think I can walk you through it because you're a little bit understand.
You have the presenter walk us through it. It just, we have numbers on a plan. It's much easier for me to follow the, a number of, it's bringing our attention to a work. So let, let the presenter just continue with, with his presentation.
So, so is it, is it C 102?
It is C 102, yes. That's the proposed plan, proposed layout for the site.
Except for it doesn't have this new landscaping near the entrance.
Correct. If you would see that, that one, there's a circle there with a 10, that meant car, 10 cars across there. Eliminating that first, making that a row of nine. That bay, which is 162 square feet, would become a pervious surface and landscaped. Additionally to the one that already exists there. Overall, with all the islands in the site included with the pervious and the landscaped areas, we're up to about 3,800 square feet, about 6%. I know it's far less than what's required currently, but it's certainly a big improvement over what exists now, which is almost zero.
Okay, so there were a couple of other issues raised. One was about the handicap parking.
A question was raised on that where we've got them to, we thought that was the most appropriate place to put them on the side. And the concern was that the, the first car does connect to the sidewalk coming around. But the back car would actually come back out into the drive lane to connect to the sidewalk. It was looked at to see what other options could take place, but it's very few that would not require the parky to really go, not go into a drive lane. If we did it to the front, you'd go across into a drive lane. Any other place, you would have a drive lane. What we've suggested and what we're, we're, we're okay with doing is taking that pedestrian walkway from Chestnut Street where it joins the sidewalk at the corner of the building. I would do the same thing at, in front of those, or I should say in the rear of those accessible spaces that would connect to that sidewalk. And then even if there was a case, that door going into redemption, the people with handicaps would be able to go into that door. If they were using the bottle redemption, they could use the machines. If not, they could walk right on through, get their car and enter into the store. So that would be the closest place for the accessible parking to be located. And I think being that that drive lane is 28 feet, 24 foot is sufficient as far as having good maneuverability as a straight run back and forth. Taking that four foot out and doing the pedestrian walkway as well as that in a stamped by two minutes and a color change. So it would definitely be not a raised area, but it would have, if you drove over, it would give you a little bit of a rumble strip if you might. If that was done in brick pavers as a stamp.
And what, what's the current condition with the handicap spaces?
The handicap spaces currently are seeing that in the front area, they're perpendicular. Let me grab these just in a minute.
So, so, so I mean, you've, you've, you've lived for years with the handicap spaces having to back into a driveway.
The hand, the actual handicap spaces are almost exactly where they're located now. It steps back because there is a gas meter and a, a water meter there for the sprinkler riser. That's being removed, relocated. So therefore they're coming right up to the sidewalk. But literally in the same space, same location as they are now.
And, and my point is, is that the handicap spaces have been there for years and and I, I, and I take it it's worked. There, there's nothing in this parking lot that's perfect.
By far.
I, I would agree.
Okay, and then there was some discussion about the height of the lights, which I didn't frankly quite understand.
I had done the lights at 25-foot poles. They're all new LED cutoff fixtures. Photometrics have been submitted with civil documents. And even though they were questioning that, they said, can we do a lower pole? My indication was if we did a lower pole, we'd have more poles, which would be more of an obstruction in the parking lot. And that 25 foot in a retail environment today is a relatively low pole as it is. Lot of them are going up into 40 feet range. We stayed away from that. 25 foot is a good comfortable to get the proper photometrics with the light fixtures we are using.
And we're not adjacent.
If you continue with the design board review, they have approved that with that discussion being had.
Right, and, and I know we're not near any residential property here. It's all commercial property.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have further questions about this?
Just on the fire access, I, I, I know the fire department is waiting. You're making accommodations for fire trucks, obviously, in the turning radius?
Yes. Turning radius is shown for the fire trucks and we've also shown a turning radius for the grocery receiving. The actual grocery receiving on the side of the building and across the back is remaining unchanged.
Is Roach Brothers gonna offer?
After 50-some years back there, I believe, so.
Is, is the company gonna offer some type of, it's quite popular, pick up people, order online and they pick up their groceries? Some sort of key?
Wilch Brothers does offer that. I'm not sure if they have enough facility here. They probably will. If you see on the plan, on the site plan, it's future pickup boxes right on where the bottle redemption machines are now.
Is that C 102, sir?
That is on C 102, yes.
Chuck, I could weigh in on that as well. Roger Bowles, Vice President of Operations for Roach Brothers. And so currently we offer services through Instacart and shipped. And we also provide catering, you know, delivery services to our catering department. We are planning to put in some roughens on the front of the building for your project e-commerce, for potential locker pickups. But that's something that we're exploring at the moment and so those are the type of services we plan to offer there.
Just asking in the context of, of, we're talking about parking, parking flow, improved flow. You know, and we've got a situation that's become more popular where people want to pick up their groceries. I'm just curious how that might work.
Yeah, so, so the, so if, if folks want to go online and, and, and place an order for service and, and, and have a pickup service, our intent down the road is to be able to stage those groceries in a locker service on the front of the building. So they would pull up to the front where Chuck mentioned where we're going to put a carriage corral. Originally it was supposed to be a parking space there. We, down the road, our thought would be we would dedicate those four, four, I think there are four spaces next to the carriage corral for pickup services. So the folks could pull into that space, probably send texts. We would, we would get, be notified in store with the text and then we can run those groceries out to their car.
That sounds like a good flow. And out of the traffic lanes.
That's correct.
Well, trying to look at the comments, we have police on fire, had no comment. Building inspector wrote a commentary that wasn't totally clear, but I took it to say he had worked with you on these plans and didn't have a problem. I mean, the health department points out there are a bunch of regulations you have to deal with.
I did have a conversation with the health inspector after I received that. We do 100% retail commercial and about 80% of that work is within retail food stores, supermarkets. And we're well aware of what process we go through assembling all the cut sheets, giving her product flow. Separate set of drawings altogether with her, the hand sink locations. And I said, we know what to submit. We will certainly submit that when we go through the building permit process. And she was okay with that as far as allowing the ZBA to, to respond to the request for special permit. But the permit process would have a whole separate scenario as we present to her.
And Public Works had no problem and as I previously, and the planning board had no comment.
I did work with your town engineer on developing the recharge system for the roof drainage. And that was suggested, that was something that we followed on. So we do have a recharge taking the roof drainage and going into a recharge system before going into Public Works stormwater.
Public here wants to be heard on this?
I, I had a couple of comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No problem. So it looks like as a result of the meeting before design review and you have some additions, you're going to be revising these plans, correct?
Yes.
When do you think you can have those submitted by?
Probably within a few days. And the, the one thing I would probably ask, hopefully so, so we're trying to get everything in place. And as you know, with supply chains and everything else, trying to get this going. So we can go into it in January, February to start this project. Even if we could get approval with conditions, I, I would request that we can do that. I can certainly say that we can satisfy anything that we've talked about and have the plans revised so they're very clear in your mind.
Good, and, and for the decision, obviously.
Yeah, we, we always, we always in our decision want to refer to a set of plans. And if we're able to describe the changes, we could approve this with a plan to be submitted that, that reflects the changes as described.
Tomorrow being Friday, I'll reach out to Alan and Majors.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I'm not so concerned whether it's two days or five days.
Yeah.
As, as I am that if we're going to render a decision tonight, we have to be explicit on the record how these plans are going to be changed.
Very good.
So, so, so to that context, and then we've all taken notes, I would like you, when we're done, maybe after hearing some of the public comments of the running, to just go through specifically the changes that you're going to make. And that the plans that you submit in five days, seven days before we issue our opinion, so we can actually check them, is submitted. My personal observations, I think the, as a frequent shopper there, the elimination of the very bizarre two curb cuts is a huge improvement. Although you can always find a parking space going in the other way. So you're slowing me down a little bit. It's probably safer.
It is going to be safer, yes.
The, the, the renderings of the facade with the, the squaring off and the front being looks really quite attractive. It's an important part of the town. And there, the, the, the company is an important resident, excuse me, a citizen of the town and been a great citizen. So it's, it's delightful. I'm a little disappointed that it's going to close for five months. So we're all going to be going up the street, obviously, to their other store. But all in all, I think it's a well-thought-out plan and I thank you for explaining that we have no curb cut, no setbacks in certain area and you're, 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 you're not expanding it. I, we don't like to see reductions of parking spaces in congested areas. But you've explained why and it, it makes a lot of sense. And the handicap change allowing those citizens to get on a walkway makes a lot of sense. So I think it's a well-done presentation.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, and I agree with what John's saying, on the, it's, 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 we're excited. I'm excited about it and it looks like it's well thought out. On the landscaping plans, we had some discussion, I think the chairman inquired. So you anticipate with the next updated plans to have elements of landscaping plan details?
The details and the planting is shown on the last sheets of the civil package.
Can you just give me a sheet number, please?
Hold on, I'll grab that.
That's because L 101?
L 501 are the details, the planting details. And L 101 is the layout and the species.
Now, if you practice Zoom, sir, posting, you'll get that better than if on the next hearing.
I'm going to dedicate a day to it. It may take me two days.
Maybe 20 minutes, you'll get it.
Yeah, it won't take that long.
We offer training services at Roach Brother.
I do have one quick question. Along the sidewalk on Chestnut Street, what is that? Is that a planting between the cars and the sidewalk? I can't tell that definitively.
Yes, there is a planting in there, yes.
Can I just come back? I'm actually looking at the, this plan. I, I've seen in the, the index, it references L 101, L 501. In the package I have, I don't have that detail. And one of the other board members also don't have it. Mine goes up to C 505. Do the board members have those other two?
I, I, I do.
I haven't.
I've got L 101.
L 101 is the layout of the, and the legends for the shrubbery planting. And L 501 are the.
Actually, I, I do have it. I was tucked in the middle. I would have expected the back. It's tucked in the middle. I, I do have it. Okay, so I was to consider what was said before. I, I do like the detail of, of adding a lot more landscaping. I think that will certainly beautify a very congested sort of stark-looking parking lot. So I'm particularly excited about the, the landscape view.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so Daphne, do we have anyone from the public who wants to comment on what we're doing?
We do not have any hand rates from the part, from any of the attendees.
Any further questions from the board? Are we ready for motion?
So I think John, you have a good idea. Just to have the presenter just describe the, the, the changes we might expect on the revised plan, some, some detail.
Okay. Just starting off, the parking space that is on the north property line directly in front of the sidewalk on the right corner will be eliminated and replaced with a cart corral. Same thing will take place on the south side, on the outside button up to the railroad property. The last space that's separated by an island will actually be. The last space that's separated by an island will actually become a cart corral as well. That gives us one cart corral in each one of the main parking fields.
And that's the elimination of those two spaces you were talking about.
Correct.
What was it? Three, it was three, yeah.
I'm sorry?
So it was elimination of three spaces, you're about to talk about the third one, yeah.
The third one is directly to the right of the curb cut at the actually at the west elevation on Chestnut Street. That first bay parking where the 10 numerical number is located will be deleted, that will become pervious landscaped area.
Do you do you want to do that? I mean, I I have, I have, I have a very mixed kind of feeling about that. I mean, I understand it's not perfect, but I hate to see parking spaces go away.
Roger, can you comment on that if?
Yeah, I mean, we 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 definitely recognize that parking's a premium and we don't want to give up spaces, but I I do have some concerns. I share the same concerns as the design board. When you're coming in off of Chestnut Street in and when you have to take a hard right, that that corner space is really tight. And I worry that if you're backing out of that space and any cars coming off the street, you start to bottleneck on the street, especially during those peak hours and holidays and during the holidays and things like that.
Okay, so so let's, you're going to eliminate it and turn it into
A pervious landscape. We'll just expand that island on the corner there.
Exactly.
That will be shown on the plan as well.
Yes, it will. Yep. And then the, I think lastly, what would show on the plan would then be the accessible spaces with that pedestrian walkway on the the rear side of them so that we would have a four foot walkway coming to the sidewalk for those people.
And that's all?
As far as the plan goes, that was all, yes. We had discussions on the setbacks and the shed and all that, but as far as impacting the plan, those are the only things that I have that would have impact on on a revision. Well, I'd be able to get this done in one day without, now that I look at how little it is.
You know, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'm comfortable if that's specific enough and we could approve this with those changes to this plan and we wouldn't issue our decision until we get the new plan.
Mr. Chair, could could if with any of the changes as well as the the respective landscape plan, L one oh one also reflect since it will be changing landscape so that we can have both an updated landscape plan in our records?
The entire set of civil will be brought up to these changes, Daphne. That include the landscape, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we have no one from the public, we've been through the comments. Mr. Tamkin, would you try to frame a motion to deal with all of this? I mean, I think I think we have to do nonconforming for the building. Then I think probably if we're approving these parking plans, we have to give pretty much a blanket waiver from design requirements and probably we also need, we haven't talked about
The number of spaces required.
Number of spaces required. Did anyone calculate that?
Yeah, it's 59 required, 58 and change, it's 59 required.
And you have 48, 81.
81 we will have, yes.
So you don't need a waiver on the number?
No.
Okay, just on the design requirements. Okay, Mr. Tamkin, would you try a motion on all of?
Sure, although I did the motion on the acceptance of the minutes, but I'll pick this up as well. I mean, Howard usually likes these, but anyway.
I did the last one, John.
I make a motion, yeah, but I recuse myself. But anyway, this is a battle, as you say, who makes motions and writes decisions because the person who makes the motion doesn't write the decision.
Oh, just the opposite, I thought, just the opposite.
So in event I'd make a motion that the applicant's application for special permit under the applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the change of the preexisting nonconforming building now occupied and operated as Roach Brothers as depicted on the plans filed with the application be approved. And that the board issue a permit to waive the design requirements of the bylaw as to parking a design. Having as depicted on the plan filed with the application and that will be modified and submitted to the board in accordance with the applicant's testimony and the changes to the file plan and to the submitted revised plan. And I think that would be it. It's a is a complete waiver of all design requirements under the bylaw.
Also, John, the reduction of the two curb cuts on the Chestnut Street?
I I think they're shown on the plan. I don't think we have to get into any of the changes. That's a design of the parking lot in the space. I don't think we have to get into specifics. I don't think we have to show where a tree is or a bush. Or but, you know, that's the application, the application was to remove the two, one curb cut. And that's the plan, that's how I see it. So that that would be my motion and I'll entertain any amendments.
Sure, the you mentioned about in accordance with his testimony, this in particular to eliminate three of the parking spaces shown, two of which will become cart carols, I guess. And the third would be a pervious landscape area.
Again, I don't think we need to get into the details, that's with the application, we're approving the facts is admitted, the findings, we can make a determination. But I'm moving to approve the plans as the application is filed.
Sure, I'm just suggesting that.
Change, subject to the changes that were described.
So so what I'm trying to say is Howard, I just don't want to do a couple of the changes. If you think it's that critical that we dictate that they're going to eliminate a curb cut, I'm happy for
No, 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 so I'm past the curb cutter, I'm just talking about there's going to be a amended plan submitted. And that the the purpose of the amended plan is to show the elimination of three parking spaces apparently as a design committee requests and that that two of those parking spaces will be converted to park to parking corrals for for the shopping carts. And the third would be converted to a pervious landscape area. I think it's a level of detail that I personally would like to see, so when we get the plan, we have some ability to just to verify it.
If we're going to recite the changes, one other change is to put a walkway behind the handicap spaces.
And I would also add to remove the shed that's encroaching on the abutting property. I just think there's a litany of things that wouldn't be necessarily appropriate in a motion to approve the application, but I'm happy to entertain all those. So the motion is been made with Howard's request to add the specific changes that the applicant is submitting, the reduction of the three parking spaces, the removal of one curb cut. And
Two curb cuts.
What?
Two curb cuts.
One curb.
One.
There's currently three on the site.
Two are going away.
Two are going away, okay. That that's why I didn't want to get into the details of it, but so babe, that's fine. That's my motion.
You want to second the motion, Howard?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, good luck.
We look forward to giving you a beautiful new store.
Yes, just one question for you, when I do the revised plan, do you want me to cloud the changes on the plan or just leave it as a revised plan?
I think it'd be helpful just to see where it is, it would be helpful to highlight it.
Okay, I will highlight it on there then identify it with a revision tag.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Try to do it in four months, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Weather permitting.
So before before we go on, I forget, Nick, since you got to vote on the first one, would you write the extension on Baker's Best?
I will.
You need practice.
Exactly.
All right.
Repetition, repetition.
I'll 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 do Roach Brothers. All right, so we have one final informal matter, which is the the request to sell Christmas trees. We deal with this every year. It looks like the church has given permission for the hours that they requested in the letter. And if no one has any problem, entertain a motion that we approve the request to sell Christmas trees as reflected in the letter we received.
So moved.
Second that.
All in favor? All right, so Daphne, you get to write the letter. I think you probably have a form.
You've written a few of these letters before.
I have.
Thanks, bud.
All right, so is there anything else we need to deal with today?
Nope, that's it. We will, we will see you all on October 20th.
Daphne, if you have the word version of the prior Baker's Best approval, that would be helpful for me to start as a template.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an extension, I'll send that to you.
Do we know what's on for October?
We do, we have two items. 84 Fair Oaks, I've been meeting with them, it is on ADU. And of course, 150 Cool Street, we, they said that they would be coming in October, but right now we have an ADU at 84 Fair Oaks. And Dave Roach and I have been meeting with the architects.
Good, good.
By the way, there was an article in, I think, the New York Times a month or two ago about these accessory dwelling units throughout the country and that Needham is on the cutting edge and people are throughout the country are talking about it, but Needham hasn't enacted a workable regulation to to encourage it or to allow it.
Frankly, I disagree. I think that the Needham ADU regulation is extremely narrow. And a bunch of other towns have done away with the notion that it has to be occupied by a relative or a caregiver. And, you know, I've made the comment to the housing committee that I think the single easiest thing they could do to create affordable housing in the town would be to eliminate the requirement that the ADU be occupied by a caregiver or relative. And that 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 would, you know, may maybe they should keep a requirement that the homeowner, the owner live in either the ADU or the house. But that would allow a lot of senior people to also earn some income to stay in their houses. And frankly, I think the current ADU that we have is extremely restrictive. And it's like utter nonsense that people have to come back in three years, they build their house and they get a permit. And and it's only good for three years. But anyhow, that's that's the housing committee is working on that and presumably they'll ultimately come up with some recommendation.
What about approving three car garages everywhere in town?
Well, I I I've requested that for three years in a row. I mean, at least at least make it allowed where there's a conforming 10,000 square foot lot. You know, I I I don't even think they would need to restrict it that way because what will happen is the third garage will end up taking up lot coverage. And if there's a smaller lot, just the lot will eliminate it, but in any of that, I've requested that of the planning board three years in a row and they somehow never get to it, they tell me they're going to.
I I I was a while back. Jean McKnight dropped by and she wanted to know what were what were some of the issues in terms of you know, potential, you know, concerns and that was one of them was still, you know, that you want what you had requested about the garage and she had it on her list. Just wanted to let you know.
We got it on their list.
It's not in a black hole.
You bring it to the top of the list, apparently.
Look, truly, it is not the biggest thing in the world, it sucks a lot of time and and a lot of people have spent a lot of money on these things and
You know, we end up getting lawyers in here.
The eight track is gone, all right, the cassette tape is gone, it's time to come to 2022.
I think we should all run for planning board, that's what I think we should.
Well, so so any of the other
It's like it's a lot of time.
I mean, I mean, put in your little commentary to Lee or Jean or any of the members of the planning board, I've certainly have tried.
Good, all right.
All right, we done?
You know, just another statistics, you know, you were talking about the ADUs and how restrictive it is. Of the eight cases that we've had, only four have gone to pull building permits. So
Oh, really?
So even though you guys have awarded, you know, eight decisions, only four.
Three years, we've only had eight of them.
And four that have hit, you know, that exist.
You know, and just just think about it. I mean, you you can put any size addition you want as an in-law apartment. The only thing the ADU permit does is that lets you put in a kitchen. And in return for that, you you get squeezed down to 850 square feet. And the most absurd part is you have to come back in three years to the to the this board for another hearing. What are we going to do? Tell them to rip out the ADU now? I mean, it 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 if if the issue, if the issue is that people may abuse it by not having appropriate people in there, that's a matter of enforcement for the building commissioner. I don't know why we're going to have to have more hearings to renew these ADU permits, but that's the way it's written.
I think it's very valid points, John.
And 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 as I say, more importantly, when they talk about affordable housing around town, I mean, it it's just a simple way. I mean, the the current bylaw already says you have to maintain the single family look. You have to have adequate parking. I mean, I I just think they ought to eliminate their limitations on who can occupy it.
Sounds like John's running for the planning boards.
No, I mean, you know, I I I I did send a letter to Jean McKnight who heads the the Affordable Housing Committee and they're doing a lot of stuff and eventually, as is the usual case, it'll take two years, they'll come out with some report.
All right.
All right, everybody.
We're on Zoom for the rest of the year, correct?
Yeah.
That's great, yeah.
Unless unless something goes wrong, we're good until, what is it, next July?
March 23, I thought I said.
Yes, it's March.
March 23.
Again, just let me let you say that Mr. Legris has not met in person, not brought donuts and he was, but that's what happens when you're appointed during a pandemic.
And he sports a heavy beard.
I'm the COVID.
I have a very reduced beard here.
Yeah, we have a closing with your office, have your partner send over a donut.
Not happening, you're going to come to the city to find me.
And you don't even look like you grew with all that good Greek food.
No, I lot of walking, lot of walking. All right, guys, take care.
Take care, nice to see you everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Take care, bye now.